Welcome to the City Council Meeting for January 10, 2011. I'd call the meeting to order and ask everyone to join me in singing our national anthem. (Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.[95.61][95.61](Singing) Thank you to the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country and to Mr. Dave Bray for his musical rendition of our anthem. I'd call for the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Counselor Wong?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that the minutes of the City Council Meeting held December 13, 2010 be adopted.
Thank you very much. You've all heard the motion. Were there any errors or omissions in those minutes? Seeing none, we'll call for the votes. Thank you. And that motion carries. I'd look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda. And Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council adopt the agenda as presented with the addition of 8.3 Library Board Bylaw and 8.4 Board Public Member Appointments.
Thank you very much. And so we have a motion for the adoption of the agenda with those two additions. Are there any other additions or changes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. That brings us to number five, Delegations. And this is an opportunity for any member of the public to come forward to address City Council on any public issue. It's an opportunity to speak to council and the first opportunity of the new year. So I'd call once to see if there's anybody that would like to come forward to speak to council. And seeing nobody rushing to the table, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, public hearings, of which there are none, unfinished business, which there's none, and finally, reports. And item 8.1, Bylaw C-1064-F, to amend the Business License Bylaw. And Counselor Radburn, would you like to bring this one forward?
Thank you, Mayor Given. If I could, what the background, as you've read in your package from Audrey, is that there was an administrative error last time when we passed the three readings of this Business License Bylaw. Unfortunately, the copy that got in the package wasn't the same as what was forwarded on from Protective Services. So I'd like to just share what was left out and then ask, try to give the bylaw three readings once again, so that we have it officially and formally.
Sure.
So we can proceed. So the four things that weren't in, that should have been, were one, just the change of the "quiet" to "quiet" in, we had provide a "quiet" atmosphere instead of a "quiet" atmosphere, so that was just a typo. And the other where we've, also there's inclusion in the bylaw where taxi broker is required to produce the log and fails to do so as required, the taxi broker is guilty of an offense, so that wasn't in, it should have been. A person, and secondly, a person who knowingly falsifies or enters false information to a log required in this subsection is guilty of an offense. And finally, the police officer may enter in a facility or vehicle and inspect records for the purpose of determining whether the taxi broker or chauffeur have complied with this subsection. So those are just three that were administratively omitted, that were part of the recommendation from Protective Services Committee and kind of, I think we need to have it to strengthen our wherewithal in terms of enforcing this bylaw.
Okay. Thanks very much.
So could I, saying that, could I move first reading of Business License Bylaw C-1064-F?
Okay. Thank you very much. So we have a motion for first reading. I would call for the votes. Thank you. That motion carries. Please carry on, Counselor Radburn.
I'd like to move second reading of Bylaw C-1064-F, to amend the Business License Bylaw.
Thank you. So we have a motion for second reading. Any discussion or debate on the motion as presented for the amendments that are contained? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. That carries. Please carry on, Counselor Radburn.
Thank you. I'd move that we have third reading of Bylaw C-1064-F.
Thank you. So this is a motion to have third reading of the bylaw here tonight. This motion must carry unanimously, and there is no debate. Call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and so we can have third reading tonight.
So finally, I would move third reading, Bylaw C-1064-F, to amend the Business License Bylaw.
Thank you very much. And so motion, third reading, and we'll call for the votes. Thank you. And that carries. Thank you very much. So that brings us to item 8.2, Bylaw C-1100-163, to amend the Land Use Bylaw. And Frank, can we have an introduction?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The intent of this amendment is to provide opportunities within the city for the development of wind energy conversion systems that would be located in the business industrial and general industrial areas.
Okay. Thanks very much. Counselor Rice, would you like to make a motion on this?
Yes. I would move first reading of Bylaw C-1100163.
Okay. Thank you very much. So motion for first reading. We'll call for the vote. And that motion passes. Counselor Rice?
I would move that council establish Monday, February 7, 2011, at 7:00 p.m. in council chambers as the date, time, and location for public hearing purposes for Bylaw C-1100163.
Thank you very much. This motion is debatable to the date, time, and location. Is there any discussion or debate on date, time, or location? Seeing none, then I call for the vote. And that motion does carry. So that brings us to the first of our additional items. Item 8.3, Library Bylaw C-651F. And Counselor O'Toole, would you ring in for us there in the queue?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a motion that council give first reading to Bylaw C-651F.
Okay. Thank you very much. I wonder if we could get a quick introduction from administration on what the content of this bylaw amendment is. Jeanette, could you maybe do that for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This bylaw amendment is for the purposes of increasing membership on the library board. The library board currently comprised, is comprised of nine members, nine members, and this bylaw proposes an increase to 10 members.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I'll note that this came forward out of council's concern about having the ability to make additional public appointments to the board, and so administration drafted this bylaw, which is much appreciated. So we have a motion for first reading of Bylaw C-651F. Any discussion or debate? We'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole, would you carry on for a second?
I move that council give second reading to the Bylaw C-651F.
Thank you very much. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. That carries. And if we wished, a motion to have third reading. Counselor O'Toole?
I'd like to move council have a third reading of Bylaw C-651F at this meeting.
Thank you. There's no discussion or debate. We'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, so we can have third reading of the bylaw here tonight. Counselor O'Toole?
I move the county council, or council, give third reading.
Whoa.[640.29][640.29](Laughter)
There's a spelling mistake on the...[644.82][644.82](Laughter) I move the council give third reading to Bylaw C-651F.
Thank you very much, City Counselor O'Toole.[655.32][655.32](Laughter) We'll call for...
No, don't do that.
We'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. So moving on to item 8.4, Public Member Appointments. Counselor Augustusson, would you care to handle that business?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council approve appointments to the boards and committees as follows. Arts and Development Committee, Wade Fleming, be appointed to the Arts and Development Committee for a three-year term ending December 31. Fletcher Bootle and Barb Dixon be appointed to the Assessment Review Board for a three-year term ending December 31, 2013. Darren Metzger, Mike Rizzo, and Robert Pape be appointed to the Combative Sports Commission for a three-year term ending December 31, 2013. Walter Androff and Casey Hines be appointed to the Environment Committee for three-year terms ending December 31, 2013.
This one's three years? This one's one year?
On the Airport Commission, I move that Clyde Blackburn be appointed for three years and Bob Hall be appointed for one-year terms ending December 31, 2013. Maura Good, Susan Bansgrove be appointed to the Library Board for a three-year term ending December 31, 2013. And Counselor L. Van der Mark from the MD of Greenview be appointed to the Library Board for a two-year term ending December 31, 2012. I move that Ryan Blay and Kelly Culture be appointed to the Pursuant of Excellence Committee for three-year terms ending December 31, 2013. Melissa Menard and Selvane Rose Deckent, Lynn Culture be appointed to the Subdivision and Development Appeal Board for three-year term ending December 31, 2013. And finally, Aaron Stedel and Amy Kout be appointed to the Take Part, Take Pride Committee for two-year terms ending December 31, 2012. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Augustusson. Just for the public's information, these committee appointments, council had intended to do them late in 2010. Due to a technical difficulty, we had to carry it over to this meeting. And in fact, it was why we're a little bit late in starting today. We actually had 35 applications for just 17 open positions that council could fill. We were able to increase that by one by adding an extra member to the library board, so that 18 public members will be able to serve on City of Grand Prairie committees. I think it's an excellent result to see this many people interested in taking part in our community through serving on a city committee. And I thank council members for working so diligently to try and get through the list. It's always difficult when we have to make decisions like this, but I would like to thank council members for their work, and I'd like to thank all those who applied and put their names forward for service to their community. So we have that motion covering all the different committees. Was there any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'd call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Okay. So we can move on from there to committee business, and the first committee up is 9.1, 100th Anniversary Committee. I believe that's Counselor Rice? Could you just ring into the queue there or request to speak?
I just did. Okay. I just turned my mic on. I move that council receive the minutes of the 100th Anniversary Committee meeting held December 8, 2010.
(Laughs) It'll take a couple meetings. Yeah. Okay. Thanks very much. We have a motion for that. Any errors or omissions in those minutes? Seeing nothing coming forward, we'll call for the votes. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Rice?
Speaking to that, I just want to say how exciting it is. You know, we're getting an early enough start, and already the ideas are very exciting and promising. The committee has made a firm commitment of stressing the importance of inviting the whole community to participate in the anniversary celebration, so we look forward to some exciting things coming out of that committee. Secondly, I would move that council approve that the expansion and revitalization of Musca C.P. Park be the capital legacy project for the 2014 100th Anniversary Celebration.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any discussion or debate on the motion? See, Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So does this, so what does this mean? This means that depending upon the monies we receive, then we tailor, or then we consider what specific project relative to the park? What does it mean?
Yeah, absolutely. When we're doing our planning, we'll be looking at grant applications, things like that. And so in order to have a focus, this is why we have recommended that this be our focus. Musca C.P. Park is a jewel that runs right through the heart of our community and that is open for everyone to enjoy.
I certainly support that.
Okay. Thanks very much. I see Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yeah, a question I had for Counselor Rice is, I'm just wondering, like, it's something for a legacy to do, and it'd be nice, and I just want to know the final cost, which we're going to be looking at, because this could be, I heard about dredging the outdoor there, expanding on this pavilion. So in the final cost, we'll be looking at the three-year, but we're going to be $160 million in debt. We might have a legacy of reducing that, so I just thought I'd bring that up.
No funds are being committed. Excuse me, no funds are being committed. The project will, as we apply for grants, to do certain projects and that type of thing, but certainly there isn't, we don't envision at this time a commitment from the city.
Well, and yeah, certainly this motion really just lays the groundwork for administration to start the planning, and then it'll be up to council through our budgeting process to choose what scale or what scope of projects we would or wouldn't support. And so this really starts that, so that we can figure out what might work and start to get some preliminary costs, and then ultimately it wouldn't be until the next budget discussions, next fall, for the 2012 to 14 budget term, where we would ultimately do the decision about what council would or wouldn't support. Okay? Okay. Any other discussion or debate?
Just one, just one more. The committee also decided and requested that the mayor send a letter to the County of Grand Prairie, asking them to sit on this committee. It was felt that this is an important enough event that it should be a regional event.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Brings us to, was there anything else from that meeting, Counselor Rice?
Just that we will be submitting an application to become the 2014 Cultural Capital of Canada, so again, that would be rather exciting.
Thank you. Item 9.2, Council Committee of the Whole. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the Council Committee of the Whole meeting held December 13, 2010. For the public, this meeting was our, at this meeting, we received a multiplex update. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'd call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Item 9.3, Public Works Committee. Counselor Wong?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Public Works Committee meeting held December 14, 2010.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on those minutes, errors or omissions? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. And that motion carries. Please, Counselor Wong, carry on.
I move that council approve the request to extend the period for subdivision approval and endorsement for subdivision application Z-2008-0020, lots 3 and 4, Plan 1735TR, for one year, to expire on November 24, 2011. And if I could just follow up with a few comments there, Mayor Given?
Please do.
Subdivision applications are approved for a one-year time period and can be extended by the subdivision approval authority for an additional year, which has already been done. The application must then come to council for any additional time extensions. So in light of the economic conditions in the past three years, administration and the Public Works Committee felt that recommending an approval for an additional year would be appropriate and that no other plans, that being our municipal development plan or anything else, would suffer from allowing this extension.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing no one ring in, we'll call for the vote. Was there anything further from that Public Works Committee? Counselor Wong?
Yes, there's a couple points of interest here. We asked administration to energize some lights down One Street of West Point, where there hasn't been any development yet, but for safety reasons, we asked them to energize those during the winter months, because it does get dark and residents are using it as a pass-through to Pinnacle, or yeah, to the Pinnacle subdivision. The other thing that we discussed at that meeting was the 124th Ave, from 100th Street to 101st Street, we asked our administration to talk with the residents and negotiate a split on the local improvement to possibly pave that road. That was something that came to council at one time, and we couldn't come up with a deal at that time, but now the residents have, or the businesses have come to us and said, we would be willing to offer this kind of deal. So we're trying to see whether or not that's going to work, and there, we recognize that there are several areas of the city that might have small patches of pavement that could use finishing off, and those are those little chunks that never get done and probably will continue to be missed in our budget unless we recognize them and start addressing them.
Okay. I see a couple other people in the queue. Counselor Rice, do you have a question coming?
Counselor Wong, I note that you received a verbal report from Mr. Hinton, the Transportation Engineering Supervisor, regarding the concerns that had been expressed by the businesses fronting in the westbound traffic lane on 68th Avenue. And I'm not sure if this goes to you or to administration, but there was a referral from General Government Services. Does the report go back to General Government Services? Have those businesses been, you know, were they notified that was going to be discussed at Public Works? I'm not, I just want a bit of an overview of the process.
Sure. Counselor Wong? Counselor Wong, I should just, yeah, turn my mic on there.
I'd ask for administration to help with that and answer.
Okay. So maybe Mr. Skavitch, from the Public Works perspective, or maybe Ms. Ferguson, from the overall, which committee gets what perspective? Who'd like to comment on that? We'll let Mr. Skavitch start.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We would certainly ensure that the originating committee got notified as to what our actions were.
Counselor Wong?
If I may, Mayor Given, the decision of the committee was that, what we heard from Mr. Hinton was that the twinning of the road and the access was already in our transportation master plan, so the plans were already there for that to always be a right-in access, a right-in, right-out access for the businesses at that South 68th Plaza. So the fact that people are now turning illegally down the, making a left turn out of there is something that we're going to have to address as an enforcement issue, but in terms of an engineering perspective, that road is doing what it's designed to do, and that plan has been in place for many, many years.
Counselor Rice?
Yeah, I think the concern expressed at GGS was the business interruption during the construction period, and I'm not sure I've heard that addressed, and I haven't had the question answered as to whether those business owners who attended at the General Government Services meeting were notified that this would also be discussed with a report from the Engineering Services Supervisor at that meeting.
So just maybe to clarify on the two issues, there is still an outstanding motion from General Government Services, if my memory serves. That administration will bring back information about, about the tax, about the money portion.
Okay.
So that's the one issue. The separate issue of whether those residents, those business owners, were notified about the meeting of Public Works addressing the technical road issue is a separate question. So, and, yeah. Okay. So is there any further discussion or debate on this? I see Counselor Radburn in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just to, Dana and other members of council, with respect to the paving of 124th Avenue from 101st Street, I do think the next step wasn't to negotiate with the businesses there. The next step was to review the design and look at proposed costs and bring that back to committee, and then I believe committee will decide what to do next. But I think the initial motion, I thought the intent was to gather that information or update that information.
I believe you're right, Counselor Radburn. Sorry, it's been about a month since that meeting occurred.
Fair enough. And so, yeah, I think there was a perception that the cost may have been less than the last time the local improvement was proposed, and so we asked administration to update those costs, and then council would choose what step would be next. Yep, fair enough. Okay. Thank you very much for those. I think that was everything from Public Works, but Combative Sports, Counselor Wong, I believe is yours as well.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Combative Sports Commission meeting held December 14, 2010.
Thank you. Any errors or omissions in those minutes? Seeing no one ringing in, I'll call for the vote. And that motion carries. Counselor Wong, was there anything you wanted to highlight from that meeting?
No, thank you, but I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Counselor Wong? I see Counselor Rice in the queue.
I note that you did revoke one license as the terms of the contract were breached, and the contract was not concluded as per the timeframe. Would this be unusual in that business, or?
Counselor Wong?
Well, there are certain processes that occur when we take in applications, and the applicant was well aware of the deadlines, and this, the revoking of our license here, I don't know whether or not it is a common thing or not, but the reason why we revoked it was the contract was supposed to be in place with the Crystal Center. The Crystal Center is a separate entity from the city, and at the time of the meeting, we were told by the Crystal Center that a contract, a valid contract was not in place. So at that time, it was already three weeks past the conditional approval deadline, and the committee felt that rather than trying to rush an event through, that it was best just to revoke this license and stop the event from happening, because really, we were two months out, and by the time we could have another meeting, we would be, it would, our next meeting is actually tomorrow. The applicant has made an appeal on the decision, so we're going to hear the appeal, but at this point, we're about 31 days away from when they plan to hold the event.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for that context, Counselor Wong. I believe the next actually is General Government Services, and that would be Counselor Rice. Counselor Rice, do you want to?
Certainly. I move that council receive the minutes of the General Government Services Committee meeting of December 15, 2010.
Thank you very much. Any errors or omissions in those minutes? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the votes. Thank you. And that motion carries. Please carry on, Counselor Rice.
I would move that council receive the Grand Prairie Regional Airport 2011 Business Plan for information, and I would ask the chairman of the Grand Prairie Airport Commission, Counselor Radburn, if he has anything he wishes to highlight from that business plan.
Okay. Thanks very much. Counselor Radburn, please.
Thank you. Be pleased to just highlight a couple things. We're planning on a small operating surplus this year, but revenues and expenditures are up about, are projected to be up about five, just over 5%. Most of the fees are remaining unchanged, although we are increasing the airport improvement fee to, I guess, to help us with looking for the future and expansion. to help us with looking for the future and expansion of our, of our runway. That fee still will be well situated relative to other airports in, in Alberta. And we are looking at additional service routes for two thousand and eleven. We're working with carriers to look at the possibilities of direct flights to Toronto and direct flights to Vancouver. So we'll continue working on those and maybe even at some point seasonally to Las Vegas. But that, I think that gives you a bit of some of the, the highlights.
Okay, thanks very much. So we have Counselor Rice's motion to receive the airport business plan for information. And just to speak to this, the airport business plan, if it's fully funded, council receives it for information. If it's not fully funded or there's borrowing that's needed, then council would actually approve the business plan because the airport's financials are integrated with the city's financials. Just to my item of note, was there any further discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Rice?
I move that council receive the two thousand and ten tax sale report for information. And in speaking to it, a tax sale was held November twenty-sixth. There were three properties offered for sale with no bids.
Okay, thank you very much. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Rice?
Move, I move that council approve that the Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association two thousand and eleven lease costs for space at Centre Two Thousand be played, be paid directly by the city to Centre Two Thousand. Speaking to that, prior to this, we have given the tourism association a grant that is equal to the amount of the rent they pay plus our membership fee, which is based on a per capita for marketing. It was felt that we no longer needed to do the circuitous route and we would just pay the rent in essence to ourselves, so. It just makes the process a little more efficient and cleaner.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, and just to clarify though, there is actually no budget impact this.
No budget impact at all, no.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Radburn, you had a question?
Just to add to that, I believe the, another part of the motion or a different motion was that we're, we're looking at separating contracts. Contract relative to the visitor information service and contract relative to the destination marketing that Helen referred to in terms of the per capita. So administration is working on those contracts and they will be brought back to committee for, for our review and then, and then to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Counselor Rice, could you just ring in again?
Oh, there you go. I'm on. I move that council receive the assessment notice audit report for information.
Okay, thanks very much.
And this is, this is a report regarding an assessment audit for municipality with municipalities within the province. It's conducted by Alberta Municipal Affairs Assessment Services Branch. And I, I, I don't think I'm being too brief when I say basically what it says is we do everything right. Is that? Okay.
Our corporate services director says yes, that's true. And just additionally, I think the report also mentioned that Municipal Affairs uses the City of Grand Prairie example as a template for other municipalities to follow. In fact, we do it so well, so. Was there any further discussion or debate on that motion?
No.
Thank you. We'll call for the vote. That motion carries. And Counselor Rice?
I move that council receive the York Hotel final report for information.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none then, I'd call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Rice, is there anything else that you wanted to highlight from that meeting?
I just would point out in the York Hotel final report, in noting that the environmental reports indicate that the site has not been impacted by contamination. So that was good news.
Certainly significant. Okay, thank you. I believe Pursuit of Excellence is next. And Counselor Augustusson? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council receive the minutes of the Pursuant of Excellence Committee meeting held December fifteenth, two thousand and ten.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on those minutes? Errors or omissions? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that carries. Counselor Augustusson, was there anything you wanted to highlight from that meeting?
Yes, just a couple of highlights from two thousand and ten. There was, there was over forty, forty applicants were funded last year to the sum of thirty thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars was given out. Of these athletes, there's eleven different sports were given funding. Four sport organizations also received some funding. And if you would care to get some funding, you can contact Kristen Meyer from the community. She's our community recreation supervisor at the city here or check out our website. Thank you.
Great, thanks very much, Counselor Augustusson. Certainly a good news story, the work that the committee does. We appreciate that. If there's nothing else from those minutes, then our next item would be correspondence, of which there is none. Delegation business, of which we had no delegations. Notice of motion, there were none. And then finally, council member reports, and I believe we had only one of those. And Counselor O'Toole, you had an update from the River of Death and Discovery Dinosaur Museum Society.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just got an update here. We just had a meeting here earlier this week and, or last week. And I just want to promote a little bit. We're having Dan Ackroyd and his wife, Donna Dixon Ackroyd, will be coming to Grand Prairie along with a bunch of their friends. And we're talking some international celebrities. They will be coming to Grand Prairie July twenty-third of this summer. And they'll be involved in a dino dig, so they'll be actually partaking into the Pipestone dinosaur beds. And that's a nutshell. It's going to be, there's going to be a, a big event. And it'll be at the Crystal Centre. It'll be a dino ball, if you want to call it that. That's what we're calling it. And there'll be tables of celebrities and it'll be a fundraising event. So.
Thanks very much for the update. I'm sure there's going to be lots of information coming about that over the coming weeks and months. I appreciate the update for council. That was council member reports. And Counselor O'Toole, if you wanted to start with council roundtable?
Uh, sure. Okay, on the December fourteenth, I attended a meeting and presentation with Waste to Energy Canada. This was held at the Aquiterra landfill site. Just basically, they were promoting and presenting some different options for getting rid of some of the debris that would be in the landfill. It was just strictly a presentation. Shortly after that, I attended the library board meeting. On the fifteenth, I attended the Pursuit of Excellence Board meeting and also attended the BDC Open House. And that was a very well-attended open house. On the twenty-first, we joined, joint city and county council meeting. And on the twenty-second, I had an, attended with, open house with Wayne Drysdale or M L A. And on the sixth, I attended the Alberta Party with acting leader Sue Huff. This was held in the city boardroom here. And just, she was going over some of the stuff that she would like to see or us would like to see in a new party, if that was a possibility, and some of our concerns with the government in the province. And I also attended later on that day there, the River of Death and Discovery Museum, River of Death and Discovery Museum Board. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. December fourteenth, I attend the youth council official unveiling of Beyond Faces, two thousand and eleven Youth Diversity Calendar Project. And just wanted to, we received actually a copy the day before at council meeting, but it was nice to have their official opening and unveiling and it was well-attended and had the opportunity to share kudos with more of the group that were involved in the project. Also had a tenor opening on the fourteenth, fifteenth. I also attended the BDC Christmas Open House and the Scores Christmas Supper and Discussion. Actually, we had a number of representatives from the college and the two school, school districts and the city. And actually, the, the discussion was quite good in terms of the future and how we can continue to work together. December sixteenth, Airport Commission had the Christmas lunch. Twenty-first, joint city-county meeting and the twenty-second, the holiday open house with our M L A. January fourth was our second Economic Development Advisory Committee meeting. We looked at helping Brian look at prioritizing the eleven goals, not fully, but to look at maybe three that he should look at. And future meetings, we're going to look at the Business Visitation Program Report and how those recommendations would mess, mesh with, mess, maybe mess with our plan, but mesh with our plan too. And also look at maybe adding some goals to our plan. So very useful. The, the three that most people talked about were the ensuring the cost of doing business in our, in our area is competitive. Ensuring that City of Grand Prairie Partners practices and processes are business friendly and capitalizing and expanding on existing transportation infrastructure were three that were identified as a particular interest to the committee. So Brian, we're going to work with Brian in terms of actions. He's going to do some work and some thinking about it and then we're going to give him some advice in terms of how to proceed with some actions relative to those priorities. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Edburn. Counselor Augustusson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. On December sixteenth, I attended the annual airport Christmas luncheon. And on December thirty, December twenty-first, I attended the county-city joint council meeting. Sometime last year, towards the end of the year, I attended at the college an, an introduction to foresight seminar with Dr. Axel Maizan and Dr. Lois Macklin. This is a very interesting, out-of-the-box, open-minded exercise. Foresight is the process of developing a range of views of possible ways in which the future could develop and understanding these sufficiently well to be able to decide what decisions can be taken today to create the best possible tomorrow. In other words, if you knew what was going to happen in twenty years, it would definitely affect the way you're going to make a decision today. So it was very interesting to try to predict the future. And also I attended our M L A, Mr. Wayne Drysdale's, the Honorable Wayne Drysdale's annual Christmas luncheon at Curling Creek. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Augustusson. Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I attended the BDC Open House on the twentieth and had a really good discussion with the, one of the major partners from Calgary, saying that the, the economic outlook for the Grand Prairie area is definitely on the upswing. Not as much as we'd liked, but it's really good news from him. December twenty-first, I also attended with the other members of council, the meeting with the County of Grand Prairie, ongoing discussions. On the twenty-second, I also attended the M L A, Wayne Drysdale's, open house. On the twenty-third, as a member of Friends of the Grand Spirit Foundation, was invited to Wild Rose Villa and Manor Luncheon. And there was singing and festivities and Wayne Drysdale was there also. Again, I, I met on January sixth in council chambers here or in the meeting room with Sue Huff, the acting leader of the Alberta Party. He had some interesting information. I'd like to offer, that was it as far as that, but I just have a couple of quick comments. I'd like to offer congratulations to, to Frank and him to pass that on to his staff. I have had more comments of what a good job our staff is doing in removing the snow. And I would just want him to make sure he passes that on. They're doing a very good job. I'd like to also, could I get a price on, have administration get a price for a metal detector for the front door? It's just something that's come across my, my information that it would be, it would be, it would be good information to know if we could have a metal detector at our door.
You could, we could refer that to committee. Probably Protective Services maybe would be the best one for that and.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, we'll refer that issue to Protective Services.
Thanks, and that's everything.
Counselor Rice?
Can't have a metal detector unless you've got somebody there to monitor it. Anyways, I just started.
Not you.
It's gone to, it's gone to administration. I attended the city-county meeting, an excellent meeting, Mayor Given. I met with Wayne Drysdale, our M L A, discussing how some of the down, downsizing in the Alberta Arts Foundation grants have affected us here particularly in the north. I attended an Alberta Urban Municipalities Association Board meeting and was appointed to the Safe and Healthy Communities Committee as well as back on municipal excellence and back on the Alberta Recycling Management Association Local Authorities Pension Plan and the Apex Overcap Pension Plan. I appeared on Alberta Primetime, talking about the, the proposed increase in provincial standards for the safety of firefighters. And I, Counselor Radburn, if you could pass on the information, the background paper I received from Deputy Chief Janine Blackburn was outstanding information. Also, I guess a real source of pride when you see how aggressively Grand Prairie has moved to implement the recommendations from the province's two thousand and eight upgrading of the standards. Grand Prairie is extremely far ahead of the majority of other even mid-sized cities in terms of the forming of a task force and, and the development of a protocol. So congratulations to the fire department and, and again, a huge note of appreciation to Deputy Chief Blackburn.
Thanks very much. Counselor Rice? Counselor Wong?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. On December fourteenth, I attended the Waste to Energy presentation at the Aquiterra landfill. December fourteenth also, I attended the youth council event unveiling their Beyond Faces two thousand and eleven Youth Diversity Calendar Project at Tito's. On December fifteenth, I attended the Scores gathering at the Holiday Inn with the rest of council and the school boards in the college. On December twentieth, Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association held a short board meeting and a Christmas gathering. And at that meeting, the executive director withdrew her resignation and was accepted back by the board of directors. On December twenty-first, I attended a multiplex regional resource committee meeting. December twenty-second, I attended the Holiday Inn, or the Holiday Open House hosted by M L A Drysdale. And finally, January sixth, I was present when council met with Sue Huff, the acting leader of the Alberta Party. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. On December twentieth, I was at a downtown association get-together, Christmas get-together. As well, I attended the youth calendar, calendar kickoff, kickoff at Tito's. Community Future seems to call on me a few times as secretary. I gotta go in, look at checks, sign them, which I'm finding quite interesting, but there's times they call you in. I'm really looking forward to growing the North Conference. My heart is the northwest of Alberta. And I believe we hopefully down the road will have a lot more proper funding in this area. So I wish everybody had a good Christmas and I know it's going to be a busy, busy year.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. I see Counselor O'Toole in the queue.
Yeah, I just forgot to bring up one.
Counsel O'Toole?
Just forgot to bring up one event that I attended. It was in Jan, or Jan, January first, two thousand and eleven. It was a dog mushing event that was held out at Evergreen Park. And I don't know how many teams were there, I think twenty-four. And they represented people from Quebec all the way, all over Alberta and all over B C. And some people, I think, were from Manitoba as well. Youth involved and even there was some elderly people that were participating, so. Older than me, actually, Helen. Thank you. And it was an awesome event. The weather turned out great and everybody that was there enjoyed themselves immensely. themselves immensely, overwhelmed by the generosity of the, of the city, store owners, the hotels. Everybody was just opened them up with open arms, welcomed with open arms. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole, and we really appreciate you attending that event on behalf of council on what is a holiday day for everybody else, so we really appreciate you making the time to do that. On December fourteenth, I attended at the Persons with Developmental Disabilities Christmas Open House, and from there, headed over for the Youth Council's Beyond Faces Calendar launch at Tito's. December fifteenth, I had the pleasure of draw, doing a draw on behalf of Big Brothers. I was the one who had the pleasure of pulling the ticket out of a hat, which the winner won a trip for two Anywhere West Jet Flies. So that was certainly exciting to do, and congratulations to Sandy Donovan, who was the winner of that. December, later that evening, I also attended at the Scores Christmas Meeting with our community partners and the school boards and at GDPRCE. December seventeenth, I had an Aquaterra Board Nominating Committee meeting, and later that day was here at City Hall for the City Hall Staff Christmas Potluck. And certainly, you know, these sort of Christmas events are relatively small things, maybe, in the, in the scheme of things, but it really makes a good working environment, and it was a pleasure to see the enjoyment that our staff took in getting together. I think it speaks volumes about the type of work environment that we have at the City of Grand Prairie, and I appreciate that, that we're able to foster that for our staff. I, I should say that our staff foster that amongst themselves, because this really is a staff-led event. December eighteenth, I was, had a walk-on at the Dinner Theatre Performance of Rumours. I had big shoes to fill, because I understand Counsel Rice had been there doing the same part. Counsel Rice, I didn't hear from the other people in the play, you know, who really was the standout actor in that piece, but I think they'd probably say that both of us were, you know, okay. If you talk to them, they, they said we were both fantastic, but-
He didn't really sit out.
But I really appreciated that. It was interesting to note that that was actually the last performance of the Dinner Theatre out at Evergreen Park. They're going to be moving into the City of Grand Prairie, and certainly a pleasure to have them in our community, no matter where they're located, but we do wish them the best of luck in their new location. December twenty-first, I was at the Joint City-County Council Meeting. December twenty-second, I was also at MLA Drysdale's Open House. And January sixth, I was also in attendance here at City Hall, as we met with Acting Leader of the Alberta Party, Sue Huff. And I believe over the course of two thousand and ten, this council and the previous council, met with the leaders of three of the parties that are represented on our provincial scene, and I appreciate the fact that we have an open-door policy to any provincial politicians that are in the community that wish to talk about municipal issues or provincial issues. I believe it really benefits the community that we do that, and get the message out about Grand Prairie wherever we can. And that was the last event that I had to report. Thank you very much, everybody. It's been an excellent meeting to start off two thousand and eleven, even if it didn't start on time. Thank you very much.